Well, good afternoon. Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon. Today is December 4th, 2023. Hard to believe. This is a 3 o'clock Rowan County Commission meeting. We are grateful for your presence if you're here with us or if you're watching by TV. We begin with the tradition that we've had for a long, long time and same thing across the whole country is we're going to do a couple of things. We're going to have our, our chaplain will come forward, Chaplain Taylor, he's going to provide for us what's called a solemnizing prayer. I always explain what this is, so there's no confusion. This is a prayer for the commissioners. It's not for you. You're welcome to listen, but we take seriously what we do and we seek wisdom in the decisions that we make to make sure that they're the best decisions for everyone in the community. So he's going to provide that prayer for us. And then following that, we're going to pledge of allegiance. So chaplain, if you'll join us and commissioner, join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners, Lord, we come to you tonight in behalf of our county commissioners, dear Lord. We thank you, Lord, that what they do and the work they do. Here we come to the end of this year, dear Lord. We ask you to bless them, give them the wisdom they need tonight to everything that's brought before them, dear Lord. Thank for the preparation that they've made, dear Lord, and pray that you'll bless them with a good Christmas, dear Lord, and give them the knowledge they need in everything they do. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, as always, for being with us. We know it takes effort for you to be here, so we appreciate it. One of the honors we have every year is an elected board is we'll pick who gets to lead our meetings. And so we'll turn this now over to Jay and we're going to do a selection for the upcoming 2024 Chair and Vice Chair. Jay?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Greg Edson.
I'll entertain a motion to close those nominations.
Move to close nominations.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motions are closed, the floor is closed, and we'll let Greg by acclamation. Congratulations, Chair. I usually go ahead and do the Vice Chair as well, so I'll open up the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominate Jim Green.
Jim Green. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close nominations?
No move.
Got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, floor being closed. Congratulations, Jim, as Vice Chair by acclamation. So we have our officers again.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. It's a...
Can I have the floor to start my speech?
Please, yes, go ahead. Listen, it's a real honor, not just to represent the county, but to represent the board. I appreciate each of you. I'm friends with each of you. I value each of you and thank you for allowing me to lead the meeting. So we'll, we'll get going. All right? Thank you all. All right, let's see. We've got, I think, one addition for our agenda. It's a resolution by the county bureau and to appoint an animal cruelty investigator. Unless you all want to discuss this at length, we could put it in as item in as a Nancy on consent. Is that okay with you, Craig?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you could also make a motion to remove the closed session.
All right, we'll do that. Okay.
Is that okay with you, Jay?
Okay. All right, we'll add item in. We'll remove closed session. Do we have any other additions to the agenda? All right, and no deletions. Well, we had the one. All right, do we have a motion to, to change the agenda as, okay. All right, and then, let's see, do we have approval of the agenda as amended?
No move.
All right, now a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I did that twice, didn't I? All right, do we have anyone for public comment? No? Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda items. And let's see here. We're pleased to have Zach is with us again this year. Zach, welcome. Come join us and thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just part of our commitment to all of our boards is just, as you know, to come and give regular updates on things that are happening at Via Health and even giving some updates across the MCO system with this particular update. But I'll, I'll give you this, I'll give you the update, be quick as I can and be happy to answer any questions. Okay, do I have control of the?
Think so.
I do. All right, so as you all know, we now have state budget in place. With that state budget, the secretary directed the Department of Health and Human Services to reduce the number of LME MCOs to no more than five and no fewer than four. And be clear, MCOs, managed care organization, of which Via is the entity that covers Rowan County. Secretary also directed the dissolution of Sand Hills LME MCO and reassigned Rockingham County to Via Health and partners and alliance also to be each assigned county. Also with this resolution, he assigned remaining counties to East Point and directed a consolidation of East Point with Trillium LME MCO. And so that will effectively leave us with four LME MCOs across the state. Of course, this is, this is all very new. We're still learning more information about this decision and what that means, and we'll definitely keep everyone up to date as we know more. And we are still slated to go live with our tailored plan operations no later than July 1st of 2024. Still on track for that. Our consolidation, our consolidated innovations waiver waitlist dashboard has been released. Our innovations waiver is the statewide waiver for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities to be served in the community. That report is available online. Here's a little link to that. Continued ongoing issues with Taylor Care Management rollout, that's something that we started last year in anticipation of Taylor Plan Go Live, and we continue to work on that. As I'm sure you all are aware, we're now, we now have Medicaid expansion that has gone live as of last Friday. For those who are interested, who think that they might qualify, there's a really great website that the department has put out, and there's a link to that here, where you can go look at eligibility requirements and even start the process with what's called the e-Pass process now. So I would encourage anyone who feels that they may be eligible for Medicaid to go ahead and get that process started. So we're looking at, Via Health is looking at taking on an extra 471 members in Rowan County with that expansion. Now, that expansion does not include other plans. Certainly with other plans, there will be a lot, that number will be a lot higher for, for folks that are eligible for Medicaid in Rowan County. This 471 is what we anticipate that we will take on extra with the expansion. We have a Healthy Opportunities Pilot that is going live February 1st. This is a pilot that covers folks' social determinants of health, access to food, housing, transportation, that sort of thing, that will be implemented to help folks with those needs. Innovations waiver amendment was not submitted timely. Appendix K flexibilities were supposed to end November 11th of 2023. And then here is a couple of shots of some of our budget provisions. This is the Intellectual and Developmental Disability and Traumatic Brain Injury Budget. Not really a lot of change between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. And then our Behavioral Health Budget Provisions, there are some changes there, some increases from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. And then just a couple of projects that I wanted to highlight that we've been working on with Benchmarks to really focus on children in foster care, making sure that they have adequate services and their needs are being met. So one thing that we have done in partnership with Benchmarks and with partnership with our DSS offices across our catchment is to ramp up a foster care recruitment campaign. We're calling this Adventure Waits. This is going to be kicking off in the new year, and we'll continue to work really closely with our DSS offices. Micah and her staff have been great to work with, and I know that they are 100% behind this initiative to increase our foster care recruitment across the area. And that, that is a, that is an issue across the nation. That is nothing new to the state of North Carolina, but it's something that we, we are really putting a lot of effort into to try to increase that, increase foster care recruitment. Also with our Pathways to Permanency Project with Benchmarks, we've been able to offer a lot more trainings. These are a list of some of the trainings that will be offered, and we will eventually have those online that folks can access at any time if they want to go find out some more information on specific topics. And then we're also starting to kick off a program with youth villages to work with DSS offices to make sure that children are receiving adequate assessments, which are trauma-informed and proactive, which will get children in foster care the services that they need. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Did the, I think it said you're able to get 350 new innovation waivers for next year. Is that right?
I would have to check, Commissioner Caskey.
I thought you had it up here. Maybe you didn't.
If, if that is the number that I've put on here, then yes, sir.
Is it, now you're much better explaining what that is than I am, but I know it's for people with intellectual disabilities. I know when we got my son on the waiting list a couple of years ago, I think this was a 10-year wait. Is it still pretty backed up?
Yes.
There. I know that someone was telling us that they were, the state was supposed to open a bunch of new ones, but was that 350 the new ones they're talking about, or is it?
Yes, yes. So with the Medicaid expansion also comes an opening of a lot more innovations waiver slots, which, as you know, we're in dire need of.
Yeah.
Good.
Zach, or maybe somebody else can answer this question. When the state closed our mental health institutions, wasn't it promised that they would support those people as they went out and tried to live in the community?
Yes, ma'am. That was my understanding.
So how many people do we have on our waiting list now statewide?
Which waiting list is that?
Well, let's start with ADD.
Oh, the ADD for innovations? I would have to check. I'm not sure. I don't have an exact number right now, but I can look into that.
Okay. Seems to me that it was somewhere over 10,000 a few years ago.
You said there was a 10-year waiting period?
Previously, that's kind of been the general timeframe for the innovations waiver for folks who are trying to seek services for intellectual and developmental disabilities in the community. Those are slots that are awarded by the state, and the department gives those slots out as they become available, but there's a finite number of slots. And when one of those slots becomes available, then the state will hand it out to the appropriate MCO. What I was talking about with Commissioner Caskey is with this expansion, we'll be getting more slots, and so that will open up these slots and hopefully reduce that wait time significantly.
And that's 10 years is, is a lifetime.
Yes, sir.
For folks that don't qualify.
Yes, sir.
Or do qualify and the state has put them off. That's a generation. How can that be something that's acceptable?
That, that has been something that we've been talking about for years, Commissioner Green. There are certainly families who've struggled without access to that waiver. We do our best to help cover those folks and to get them services that they can qualify for without that waiver, but it's certainly not meeting the need that they have. But yes, it is a long wait time.
Is it a funding issue that's causing this backlog?
Uh, yes. Well, I would think so. That would be at the heart of it. And certainly, we've seen with the increase in these slots, that happened as a result of Medicaid expansion, which was increase in funding from federal government. And then, you know, you, you receive more slots because you have that increased funding.
What do you see as the answer to it?
That is a good question, Commissioner, and I don't know that I can answer that. Certainly, more funding helps, and this Medicaid expansion helps tremendously. So I feel like we will start to see a lot of improvement with this waitlist since we've gotten expansion now.
Is it a facility situation where you need places to, to take care of these people? Or is it just a funding for like personnel?
Uh, this particular waiver is for folks to be served in the community. So these, these waiver recipients wouldn't receive services in a facility. This is simply the funding for their services. So whoever's providing those services, the cost is, is enormous. And so with this waiver, it allows them to receive those services even with a high cost. It's not cost prohibitive.
Okay, so if I could just perhaps answer a couple of questions. Folks coming out into the community, they can be cared for by their family members. They can be cared for by professionals, which is just incredibly expensive. But then also they have the homes, like the Ark Home and other places where, that they, the folks can live, and then that, that slot or waiver can help to fund those situations. But it's, it's what I mentioned earlier, it's, it's a confusion or lack of knowledge or whatever on behalf of our state legislature and our governor as to how many people need the help and whether they're willing to give it or not. It's money.
Thank you, Commissioner. My, my problem here is I'm trying to understand how we have a situation, like Jim said, that takes 10 years for some people to get some, some help. I mean, to me, there's, there's a breakdown somewhere, and I think to fix the problem, that's what we have to identify first, is where's that breakdown? Is it facilities? Is it personnel? And it all falls back, like he said, to funding. And I, and I understand it, but as much money as, as the state has in their fund balance, there should be an answer here that shouldn't be directed toward the county. It should be directed toward the state. Well, if the state says, "We are going to help people in this particular situation", they have to come up with something less than 10 years. I agree. I agree. I mean... That's ridiculous. It, um... I mean, that's almost the entire lifespan of a child going to school. It's only lacking three years of...
Well, you know, and if people don't know that, you know, I have an autistic son. He's an adult now. And so he's fortunate that he lives, you know, with us, and we can pretty much take care of him. And obviously, there's jobs or trying to get him a job, that kind of thing, that we're always trying to battle through. But, you know, really more for the people who don't have, you know, don't have a good home to live in when they grow up and, and trying to find those services. Because, you know, all the services that he would be eligible for, you know, we don't need all those services for him. But there's some things that we would like, and I'm just using from my personal experience, that, you know, help him try to get job training and those sort of things, and they come along throughout the way. So I don't, I don't necessarily, I'm not saying it's our General Assembly members' fault, because I know that they, they try to do the best they can. But I think there's just a misunderstanding overall of the mental health issues that we have in our country. And just the widespread amount of it is, because I think I've mentioned before, probably 80% of the people that I deal with as a police officer have some sort of mental illness, you know, either from intellectual issues to substance abuse. And so honestly, I don't want to, I don't want to come away that we're attacking the, our members and General Assembly members, because we have, we have very good ones here. So it's, it's, it's not, not those folks. But I do think it's, we need better understanding of what's going on out there. And, you know, I don't know, you start talking to people, you know, it used to be you'd have a few people here and there, but I mean, everybody in this room knows somebody that's, that's, that's got autism or whatever it is now. And I don't know why the growth is happening in our community and our country. There's more and more people that are having, that are having issues like that. So obviously, you're right, 10 years is, is a rough time to wait. You know, and I, and for our, you know, I don't, you know, talk about our particular situation, but we probably should have tried to get in the program sooner than when we did. But, you know, a lot of it, you try to, I think you'll be able to deal with it on your own. And so some of that's issues of trying to recognize, you know, where you're at. You're going to grow out of this or grow out of that. But no, I think there is going to be more funding, but like Judy said, I mean, when they changed the way it was set up and they closed a lot of the facilities, and I know why they closed them, because they were just putting, putting people away and not really getting any treatment either. They were just kind of going into the places. So it's one of those things we've got to deal with as a nation, as, as a country. So it's not a, it's not necessarily directly a county issue. It's more of a state and a country issue. But, and I don't want a confusion that all these people are, our county is waiting 10 years. It's, you know, it's just whenever you get on the list from a statewide standpoint.
Zach, could you put, research that a little bit and, and give us the numbers statewide and then for our county as far as, I'd like to know when the institutions were decertified and people came out in the counties, because number one, part of that was a huge growth in homelessness. But then number two is how long the list, we, there's been a waitlist for ADD over the years that, you know, from the time that the institutions were closed. And perhaps if someone can put a number as to what it would cost to bring that list up to date, that'd be great.
Sure. Be happy to look into that.
You know, the, the funding is not a, a static number. I, I don't know what the state's line item for this is. And while I can't be sure, my guess is that they're not cutting that. So on the other side, I always talk about the other side of the equal sign, right? What's the rest of the story? The rest of the story is there's an explosion in cost per patient, right? Shaking your head, yes. So, yeah, that's right.
Yes. Well, like with anything, inflation.
Right, with everything. So as we're talking about legislature, we also got to, like I said, look at the other side of the equal sign. And then as a nation, our mental health issue is exploding as well. And so why aren't we asking, why is that? Typically, those aren't things we talk about. We just fund it, right? So a lot of us are interested in the, that side of it to say, why are we having such mental crisis? Social media is a big part of that. Young kids are having these issues and nothing certainly that will ever solve here, and certainly not today. But just to point out that we can say we need more money, and we do. But what's the rest of the math?
Sure.
All right, nothing we need to vote on. We need to thank Zach for coming and joining us. Zach, was that all?
Yes.
Are you done?
That is it. Thank you.
We appreciate it. We've got your stuff here. And so thank you for coming, as always.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Engaging in our questions. Thank you.
Appreciate it as well. Have a great holiday season.
You as well. Merry Christmas.
Sister.
Anna, did you want to talk about what's going on in Kannapolis?
I think we have two representatives here from Kannapolis that we're going to present to you.
Oh, okay.
I'll let them come up and, and do that.
Well, welcome.
And I'll let you guys introduce yourselves. That'll be great. Thank you.
Kevin Gary, Superintendent for Kannapolis City Schools.
Scott Rogers, Director of Operations and Facilities, Kannapolis City Schools.
Thank all of you for your ongoing support of our school district and county manager as well. Thank you for your support. We are, so this is actually our third venture into the, this is a mouthful, but it's the North Carolina Need Base Public School Capital Fund Grant. So this is our third, third application. We've applied through Rowan County. Rowan County's endorsed this application on two other occasions. So the window recently opened. I think it's either 30 or 60 days after the budget pass, passes, the, the window opens for the application. So we would like to apply again. We have our application ready. We do need an endorsement from the county commissioner, the chair and a signature. Our school board is fully behind it. And it would be for an expansion and renovation of AL Brown High School. So in the presentation, there is a link to the actual state site that has a ton of information about the grant, kind of the source of it, the background, the process, and so forth. It is an annual process. DPI, Department of Public Instruction, reviews these annually. This one is actually due January 5th, so the window opened November 11th. It's due January 5th, and I don't know when districts will get responses. I'm guessing probably around March. It's usually about a 60-day review period. Again, must be signed by the chairs of the Board of Education and the county commissioners. If a city school district, such as Kannapolis City, and a county school district, i.e. Rowan Salisbury Schools, both submits applications. They have to do that separately. They can't do that in conjunction. And only one can be submitted per campus. So if you're doing a renovation and an expansion, it's one, it's one application. I won't go through all of these, but they are, there is a rubric that the state uses that is open to the public for review, the rubric. Counties designated as development Tier One areas, always kind of have the upper hand in that. They also have anywhere from, some of those counties have a 0% match, 5%. It's lower than Tier Two counties, certainly lower than Tier Three counties. But all of that is evaluated. Projects with new construction or complete renovation of existing facilities do qualify, so that's... or complete renovation of existing facilities do qualify. So that's what we're looking at for AL Brown. It can be for new construction as well. So I'm sure statewide, some of these applications are for a complete, complete build. Counties are eligible or school districts, if they have not received the funding in the last three years, we have not received that. They also look at, that's not the case with us, but the state does look at consolidation. So I know some of the counties in the east, eastern part of North Carolina, over the last couple of years, who have received these grants, that has been their, their situation. For the maximum amount, I'll just cover the high school maximum. I do want to note that this has increased. The previous maximum amount was $50 million. They have increased that to $62 million. My guess is the inflation of construction costs, that they're trying to equate that to what's happened over the last couple of years. So for Rowan County, the local match, and this is pulled, this slide is actually pulled from the, the state site. We just took a screenshot of, of Rowan County, but obviously every, every county in the state is listed in their, their match. The match for Rowan County is 15%. I'll get more into that detail in just a moment. And, and looking at, kind of evaluating AL Brown's needs, two big things really. One is growth, and looking at just what are numbers, and the next slide, I'll, I'll get into that. So I'll come right back to that. And the other is just the renovation. So it's really expansion for the growth, and then renovation based on the age. AL Brown, and I know there's some, I mean, statewide and certainly in, in Rowan Salisbury Schools, there's some older schools. Older schools are often really good schools in terms of how they've been maintained. And we feel like we've been really good stewards of taxpayers' money, both Cabarrus and Rowan County, in maintaining AL Brown over the years. But it's still 70 years old. It's right at 70 years old. And a lot of the challenges with, with AL Brown are a good percentage of the classrooms. So the original main building, which was built in 1952, they're really small. Not only have class sizes gotten greater because population is greater, enrollment's higher, and I'm not being funny when I say this, but people are bigger. And teenagers are bigger. And there's a, anecdotally, we see that, but it's, there's also a lot of, a lot of truth to that and data to support that. So it's, there's a picture there of one of the classrooms in, in the main building, what we call the old building, which was the original, part of the original structure. And when we think about that campus, and most of you have been there probably more than once, you know, one of the luxuries of that campus, in addition to kind of being the center of the, of the town, and the location of it is the acreage, and there is room to expand. And one of the things I'll close with in just a moment are the advantages of renovation and expansion versus looking at a new build, looking at a new school. So again, it's really based on the expansion needed for growth. And I'll show you those numbers, and also just, you know, the renovation based on the aging. So enrollment, won't go through all of those, but kind of see the trend, where we're projected to be by 2030. AL Brown right now is, you know, 1750 is kind of conservative. We saw the number last week, our enrollment's about 1770. So.
Do those numbers come from the state? Or where did you get these?
Those are internal, based on our projections, based on students and grade levels currently. So we can look at, you know, and it's easier to do in a single high school district because everybody goes to AL Brown. So, yeah. Good question. We took some of this, and we worked with Cabarrus County's GIS, their demographer, and also the city planner in Kannapolis to just, to do our best to extrapolate based on some of the, the housing, some of the builds that have been approved, which I'll, I'll show those in a second as well. But the bulk of this, because a lot of those, when you're talking about high school, I mean, it's, it's difficult to predict. And I know there's a lot of science behind being able to predict, you know, how many children per household and all that. But predicting high school students is even more difficult. So but what we do know, what's more certain is the predictions and the projections based on our K-8 enrollment currently. So. So these are, the black line actually is the KCS district. So if you're looking at this map, you know, some of that obviously is outside of the black line. It goes into Rowan Salisbury Schools, some of it goes into Cabarrus County Schools. But within that black line, those are the boundaries for our district. And you can see, you know, there's some significant development there, single-family housing. These are approved units, so they have different timelines. Some are in construction now. Some are approved and they're in design stage. So they're in different, different stages. But single-family townhomes and multifamily, mostly apartments. So the, some of that is, is coming into our district. And really, for the first time in a, in a number of decades, have we seen that type of, of growth within our school zone. As you all know, the city of Kannapolis, I mean, we, Thaneck Station, I mean, we have all the way over into, closer into West Cabarrus, that area is blown up off of Exit 54, but that's not our, that's not our school district. So kind of pointed out. So quickly, this is, you think about the expansion history. You know, 1939, the Cannon Gym, which was part of the original Cannon High School, eventually Junior High, that is, that is actually still on the campus, that has been condemned for use as of about six years ago, about six years ago. But that building still is on our, on our campus, is currently used for storage for the district. 1952, I mentioned, the main building was constructed. 1960s, what used to be the vocational building, and arts building, currently now, still a combination of arts and, and career and technical education courses. That was built in the 60s. Fast forward to the 90s, we had some significant additions, cafeteria, what we called the science and math wing, was built in the 90s off of the main building. And also the media center was built in the early 90s. So when you look at AL Brown's main building now, it's, it's huge. It's long, the length of it's really kind of impressive. But you, when you think about how they got there, you know, a lot of times, unless you're in the building and kind of walking through that interior, a lot of people don't realize that, that main building was built in the 50s. Again, it has been well maintained. In 2000, 2006, the standalone auxiliary gym, which is beside a bullet gym, was built. And I kind of skipped bullet gym earlier. Bullet gym is the old gym, the original gym. It was built in 58. But auxiliary gym was built in 2006. And then the most recent addition completed in 2011 was the STEM wing that comes out toward North Rose Avenue, off, just as we continue to add to that main building. In 1952, originally, you see the original part of that, you know, you've been there lately, how much greater the size of the school is now. And that's Cannon Gym, kind of outlined over in that, in that other photo, as part of the original Cannon School, Cannon High School. One thing I wanted to share, though, when we talk about renovations, you know, look at all those, those decades of additions. And granted, some of those are, are much more recent. So there's no reason to talk about renovation there. But the only building that's really had a renovation is the arts building. And I said it used to be, it was arts and vocational. It was, it was called vocational for a long time. And that was renovated in, that renovation was completed in 2011 in conjunction with the, the expansion of the STEM wing. So, so really, you know, that, those buildings that were built in the 50s and 60s, only this, this building has had a renovation over the last seven, seven decades. Renovation versus new school construction, you know, we, the first challenge is that, you know, our footprint for our school district's not very large, you know, that there is not acreage to purchase to begin with for us to even consider a high school. You know, there's tradition at AL Brown. It's rich with tradition. It's in the center of the city. Architectural tie-ins to some of the city buildings are also important. Cost of a new high school, and, and we're fairly, fairly in the loop on this, because our neighboring high school, which is part of Cabarrus County Schools, Northwest Cabarrus High School, you've probably heard, they've been trying to build a new school for five, six years now. And that cost has continued to climb and climb and climb. So, you know, I know when you take on a new school, you have fields, and you have all the, all the other things. And there's some things that are naturally going to drive the cost up. But this is an estimate, but, but not far off. And Cabarrus County Commissioners have agreed with this as well, that, you know, our projection is probably 55% of what a new high school would cost to build right now. So significant difference. And then, like I said earlier, there's ample room to expand on the, on the existing campus. So just to close out with a few things, we did have a campus study completed in fall of 2021. So it's almost right at two years ago, by a little architecture. And that campus study was focused on expansion and renovation, of course. And the expansion, the biggest piece of the expansion really comes down to the addition of one standalone building that's highlighted there. The old Cannon Gym, which was built in the 1930s, would be taken down. And this would go approximately in the same location of the, the old Cannon Gym. And just quickly, not to go through all the details, but quickly, it would bring about 20 additional classrooms. The, it would become the center point or the entrance, main entrance of the school, off of North Rose Avenue. The cafeteria would move there. And a lot of what would, will happen, it's not just adding 20 classrooms in this building, it's what would happen behind. So this building would be constructed first, and then like the existing cafeteria would move into this new building where the existing cafeteria is, JROTC would move there. So it's the domino effect of creating additional space through renovation and movement of programs around the campus. So the net gain is bigger than this 20 additional classrooms. But that is the, the big expansion piece of it. And then renovations, you know, primarily the 1952 area and the 1958 bullet gym. Those would be the, the two areas that would, that would be the part of the renovations. And then to close, the key components of the grant application, already kind of went over the dates and the support that we also have from Cabarrus County. Senator Newton's pledged letter of support, hope to ask the same from Senator Ford. The total estimated project cost, 74 million. When the study was completed, it was closer, it was in the low 60s. So we've adjusted, that's been adjusted for inflation, not just us throwing numbers out there, but we consulted with Cabarrus County's construction team to give our best estimate of that, of where things have gone since Little completed that in the fall of 21 versus now. And then our state request is for the max amount for high schools, which is 62 million. And, you know, shared the match earlier, the maximum match that, that Rowan County would have, would be 9.3 million, which is 15% of the total of 62. That's the max that we can be awarded. However, Cabarrus County's portion of that is 6.975, the difference being 2.325 million for the match. So. Questions? Best answer?
You guys have applied for this twice already?
We have, yes.
My understanding is we have too. Any insight as to why you've been turned down?
We, we followed up, and even one of our board members did too. There's not been a, a major blemish or gap in our application that we've been told. I think it's just persistence. Honestly, I know it's a, an easy way to answer it, but it's, even when you look at who's been awarded over the last couple of years, the years that we've applied. Now, I will say, there have been some outliers to that. Catawba County is one. Catawba County is a tier two county, and they're somewhat similar in that Newton Conover City Schools, they have two city school districts, Hickory City and Newton Conover City. But Newton Conover City applied and actually got the, the max for something similar to what we're doing, an expansion renovation. And they got the max for high schools of 50 million. So there are some outliers in there, but predominantly, the awards over the last couple of years have gone to mostly tier one counties, and most of those geographically have been a little further east in some of the counties that really, really, really struggle to generate revenue, property tax revenue. So, and that's what we've seen.
We hear that's an issue.
Yeah.
That's a big issue is generating.
Yeah.
What, what, are y'all, y'all tier two or tier three?
Cabarrus is tier three. And Cabarrus's match is 35% now. So it's, their match is significantly higher. But again, they've, you know, for, and, and this is, I've revisited this with county manager Downs, and we've brought this up in all of our, you know, budget, the process with Cabarrus County government. And they have continued to be supportive of, you know, their 75% share, because our students, it's kind of an easy number to remember, we're right at 75% Cabarrus County and 25% Rowan. So Cabarrus is still committed to that partnership, obviously. And the school obviously sits in Cabarrus County, but, but does have right at 25% Rowan residents.
One last question. If, if the grant doesn't, is not successful for y'all, are you pushing ahead anyway?
It's tough. The biggest, I'll call it challenge, because it really is a challenge, is the Northwest Project is in front of us. The Northwest Cabarrus High School Project is in front of us. So, and that's a significant commitment that Cabarrus County has made, you know, and please don't think I'm advocating for a bond. It's not what, but in the absence of a bond in Cabarrus County with some of the builds and some of the needs they've had, that's, that's a pretty, pretty tall mountain to climb to try to, to do both high schools simultaneously.
Just for my personal information, it didn't look to me like you had added many parking spaces there. With the significant increase in students in the next five, six years, did you add parking spaces? Or that's something that?
Sure. Yeah, good question.
If you come back to this slide, where we're building the new, the new building that's highlighted in yellow, that white area right behind it is all parking. That's a big add.
Is that new or old?
That's new. Well, half, I'm gonna call it half old, half new, because half of it were the tennis courts. Those parking lots, towards the football field, that's all that white area there.
Below the line across from the administrative building that we could. It's a really interesting configuration, because our junior and senior parking lots are actually across Martin Luther King Avenue, over by Trinity, on both sides of Trinity Church. So they're not full. We got some, some room there. But, you know, but our central office, our district parking, there's more room on that side, which is currently called the junior parking lot. So we're not in real bad shape now on the parking, as we are on classroom space. But, but that was taken into account by Little. And some of their more detailed renderings, that's highlighted a lot more. We didn't really highlight it as much, but that's a, that's a good point.
Last question. Since some of our schools play AL Brown, none of this will be used for any athletic enhancement, will it? Okay, that's good. Because we'd get slot, we'd get slot. Because we'd get slot, we'd get slaughtered for that. We're kidding.
Carson just beat AL Brown by thirty in basketball the other night, so.
That was all right. All right, we're doing all right. All right.
We still have every coach in the county come to us and ask why we can fund synthetic football field at Kannapolis, and none of our schools have it. So, we may have to come get some turf from you if this is approved.
Yeah, I imagine you'd probably get that question, I'm sure.
So, Aaron, we, do we just need to vote to endorse their application?
Yes, sir, and authorize you to sign it.
Okay. All right. All right, do we have a motion then to endorse Kannapolis City Schools applying for the Need to Base Grant? Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah. Good luck to you. Mr. Muir. Good to see Phil Conrad is here with us, also head of our MPO. Welcome, Phil.
Good afternoon. Today's hearing is for the potential adoption of the Long Ferry Road Corridor Study. And if it's adopted, it may be referenced in the future as another type of adopted plan in developing statements of consistency and reasonableness. The study was prompted by development potential and economic development interest in the corridor. I think the board is, is aware of the Red Rock Project and others that are occurring west of eighty-five that are in Spencer's jurisdiction. But nonetheless, the study had its reasons largely based on that. The county secured WSP to conduct the study for us. It began in May of twenty-two and was completed in June of twenty-three. A majority of the funds that were utilized by the county to conduct the study were obtained by the MPO through their direct allocation funds. What I'm going to do is just kind of summarize the plan recommendations. And if you have any questions along the way, just feel free to ask. Study focused on this two-point-eight-mile corridor that began, or begins at North Salisbury Avenue, which is also twenty-nine, extending east to its terminus at Leonard Road and Long Ferry Road intersection. West of eighty-five along the corridor is, is generally Spencer zoning jurisdiction. And then east or out is the county's jurisdiction. So, the plan recommendations and what's contained in the document address both local governments. A draft of the plan was presented to the Board of Alderman and the majority of this board on August third. And a workshop, a republic workshop was conducted September twenty-first by both jurisdictions at the town hall. Study purpose was really to, to look at a couple of different things. Look at how to improve safety, mobility, and operations, especially in light of development that could handle anticipated traffic generated by trucks and the local community. And then also see what we could fit within the existing right-of-way or the right-of-way constraints and existing development that are out there. The objectives closely aligned with the purpose. We focused on safety, mobility, operations, impacts, economic growth, and then policies. The corridor was divided into seven segments. Each of them have a corresponding NC DOT cross-section. For our purposes today, I'm only going to focus on the ones that affect Rowan County. So, those are the only ones that you'll see in the future. So, again, we're starting about where segment four is at the northbound I- eighty-five interchange. Getting here, there's the Rushco, or former Rushco on the north side of that intersection. And that's at Front Creek Drive and Willow Creek Drive. Here, as we travel eastward, the cross-section is what DOT labels as a four-E. It's going to be a four-lane divided median cross-section with wide outside paved shoulders. It's a hundred and ten-foot right-of-way. As we continue east, this gives you a conceptual idea of what that may look like in the real world, considering existing development. It's kind of hard to look at in this scale, but with the PDFs that we have, you can see a little more detail. The other thing I would mention about this is this is just conceptual. Nothing has been done at this point. This plan will come into place when new development or proposals come before this commission. Will be the large share of what you see, these recommendations designed to, to address. Continuing east, this particular cross-section stops here about where the Red Rock Project is. Where Red Rocks picks up, this is a component that was of their TIA. We pick up a two-lane with center turn lane and wide outside paved shoulders to accommodate truck traffic. Well, eighty-foot right-of-way in that section. Continuing east, this gets us to about Dukeville Road. We transition back to the, the two-lane cross-section with wide outside paved shoulders. And this is the typical sixty-foot right-of-way. So, the study recommendations, and these are the things that, that the board will see in the future. The first, the first and the third, increased setbacks along major thoroughfares and right-of-way dedication improvement are likely going to be most seen when we have conditional district applications, rezonings, or special use permits. Staff will talk to the applicant about these things, and their plan should address that. Traffic impact analysis, the site plan process, or at least the requirement in the zoning ordinance exists now. Options for payment in lieu of improvements is just a simple opportunity for a developer or an applicant to pay for improvements that don't get completed before they have occupancy or, or intend to have occupancy of their structure. And so, we've got that in the subdivision ordinance now. Cross-access, stub streets, and access management will really focus on reducing the number of curb cuts accessing Long Ferry Road and also encourage interconnectivity between projects. It's likely that at least two and/or three of these will require updates to the zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance and probably some coordination with the MPO so that all plans are consistent. There's no, there's no gaps. So, we're asking the commission to consider adoption of this study. Again, if it's adopted, we would categorize it as a plan. The planning board conducted a courtesy hearing on October twenty-third. They have a statement that supports their recommendation for consistency and reasonableness. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. And if there are no questions, I would just remind you that this is a hearing. Open the hearing, close the hearing, adopt the statement, and then make a recommendation to approve. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed. Don't run out. All right, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Talk about this corridor study. Anyone like to speak? All right, hearing none. We'll. Whoa. What? I'll re, I'll reopen.
Thank you.
And go ahead.
Don't worry, I won't grill you this time. I'm just wondering, okay, so within the context of this recommendation, are, can we, can we look at other methods for safety?
Sure. I mean, this, I guess for the record, I'm Phil Conrad with the Cabarrus Rowan MPO. So, this is, as Ed, I think, covered pretty well. This is a concept plan and looks at the corridor as a whole. But I would submit to you that there are going to be opportunities to look at intersections along the way and potential bottlenecks as sort of time goes on. The biggest rezoning you've had out there is the Red Rocks Project. But, and I don't know how to get back to the slides that have the maps, but the one map where you have really a plethora of smaller linear lots. It's, it's hard for me to believe that at some point, those won't get combined into some sort of application that'll come back before you. And it's very important that you have a corridor study like this that will articulate that vision to whatever developer you have. And I guess to sort of add to some of the comments that were made, you know, that I would compliment your staff, I would compliment Ed and his team on a study that was well-done. Managing the consultant. But, you know, in this day and age, it's very important that you're detailed in your scope of work and so that you get what you want. And I think that you guys got a fabulous product for a very good price. I think the county had about eight thousand dollars invested in the study, which is really uncommon in today's age. And then also, you, you held some public meetings, and for the most part, I got, I think Mr. Ed's was there. We got some positive feedback from the public that attended those meetings and were supportive of the county looking at a vision, particularly as you move towards the lake. I think some folks were asking, you know, when are you going to do the improvements? And that's always the question. So, you know, we don't, again, back to the term concept, we don't have funding to implement that vision yet. But this is the first step. And you guys have taken, as a county particularly, counties aren't involved in road construction and finance. You guys have taken a tremendous step in an area that I believe will continue to grow. And you'll have, you know, you'll have a substantial change in your tax base out there, which everybody is interested in as well.
Just to follow up to that other meeting, I think I asked about some costs and different things about locations of current roundabouts and where. I didn't get anything from you, so I'm wondering where does that information come from?
So, that's really at the project phase where we could do some sort of windshield cost estimates. I believe there were some cost estimates generated as part of the study. I don't have it in front of me. I think Mr. Muir is going to come up and. Put that in their packet. So, if you look in your, there's some planning level cost estimates on page seven of the excerpt that's in your packet. And so, those give you some, some idea of what it potentially could cost. But again, this is, it's a concept phase. So, you know, you, you don't have probably the level of detail. The other thing is, this is, I think this was the case, this was current day cost. And by the time you get down to actually building something, the cost is going to be substantially more. But what I would say is that bottom number is certainly the one that most folks are going to pay attention to, which is about sixty-seven million dollars. And that's a pretty robust cost for the improvements that are projected as part of this study.
And just, I know when we talked the other time, I think you mentioned something about citizen support. And I just wanted to let you know that after the meeting, one of the volunteer firefighters from that part of the county was very excited that I brought it up, because he does believe that that's a true safety change that we can make that will protect all our citizens.
Right. And I think any partners that we can have along the corridor, partnering with NC DOT. Want to compliment the county on including Spencer as a partner in this study there. Needs are very different from yours as you move to the west there, particularly in terms of the grade separation with the railroad. But, and I think staff sort of came up with this concept of looking at the study in sort of three geographic phases. Sort of the western section, the interchange, which folks look at that interchange and say, well, what's the big deal? But as development increases, that current footprint of that interchange is going to have to change. And, you know, we're seeing a lot of development along the interstate. And the function of those interchanges is going to cha, interchanges, plural, is going to change over time. And then that eastern segment, which is, includes Red Rock, that, that really sort of functions in separate, sort of separately from the interchange, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
You know, as you think about the growth happening in Rowan County from an industrial standpoint, we're trying to keep it as interstate location, closest to the interstate as we can. But if you work your way from south to north and China Grove exits and Peeler Road and Julian and Jake and, and then up even, I'd invite you to roll up eighty-five and look at exit seventy-nine now. There's in the city limits of East Spencer, eighty-some acres that has been, is being developed now, and so it's everywhere. So, one of the things we're looking at here on Long Ferry kind of have the benefit of what we didn't have the benefit on. And most of these other interchanges, which is knowing something's coming and being able to plan ahead where all of these others are kind of doing catch-up from an infrastructure standpoint, so.
Doesn't like predicting the future when you've sort of got a little bit of an idea of what it might look like.
Yeah, it happened so.
Inside or baseball.
Yeah, it happened so quickly in Rowan County, and so some may say, well, then why didn't you just turn it down? Well, because you don't know if it ever comes back.
Right. You don't know, you don't know what you could lose, absolutely opportunity cost.
You know, besides what you're projecting in the future, we also, we already have Aldi out there. And we already have Chewy out there. So, we know that it's there and, and we're going to have so many transfer trailer trucks in there right now. Plus, whatever the future brings. Going to make that a, a real hub in Rowan County.
Right. If there's no one else, is there anyone else? Then we'll close the public hearing. And let's see. I've got, would someone like to read the statement of consistency and reasonableness? Here, I got them here.
Oh, good. Get closer to me. Long Ferry Road Corridor Study is reasonable, appropriate, and necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County, not previously envisioned by the East Rowan Land Use Plan, based on the following. It supports, do we approve these individually? Okay. It supports economic growth along the Long Ferry Road Corridor. It advances the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as the intent and spirit of the ordinance. It will allow the county to be proactive with developers, including requiring improvements to current infrastructure as needed. Furthermore, this adoption is deemed an amendment to the East Rowan Land Plan use. I make that in form of motion, Mr. Chairman.
Craig, second. Any other discussion? All right, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Phil and Ed. That's been a. Can we start that? Was it last year? Last year?
We actually got started in May, but I think the process before that started, before that. One other thing I would remind you, you want to adopt the, the plan as well. You adopted the statement.
Uh.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry, yeah.
I'll make a motion too.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, Ed.
Just start it. Don't let it finish it, just start it.
We knew what you were going to say.
All right. Now, we're going back for a second bite at the apples. On, this one is Z O eight dash two-three. Keller DBA Joe Vert Recycle, Joe Dirt Recycling.
Yeah, so this just is a continuation of the hearing that, that was opened on November twentieth. If you recall, there was a statutory, or there is a statutory requirement for notice to be published in the paper. And we had a little snafu with how that didn't occur. And so, that's been remedied by extending the hearing from November twentieth until today's date. Just for those that may be watching at home and, and those on the board that don't remember, let's talk about what the conditional district standards are for a yard waste notification site. The state classifies this as a facility that, that takes leaf material, twigs, The state classifies this as a facility that, that takes leaf material, twigs, probably stumps, logs, and that type of thing, and grinds them into mulch. It's termed a yard waste notification site. The maximum size is two acres. And the conditional district standards, we, we consider this a type of recycling facility. So they are considered or allowed to be considered in the RA District as a conditional district. You see the general location there on the site plan on the screen, it's two acres. The specific requirements that the site must meet is that it's got to be 200 feet setback from adjoining property lines. Properties outlined in yellow, you see the red arrow there, that's 200 feet or more. It's got to also be 300 feet from a residence, church, or school. The blue buffer of the two acre site is shown there and you see the 300 foot lineated, the access road to the site's got to be 20 feet from adjoining property lines. Mr. Keller does own this adjoining tract. However, I would offer that when we see his site plan, it's going to need to be 20 feet from that particular line. So that if it's conveyed in the future, it will still comply with that requirement. The other items are informational sign posted at the entrance to the site. Access has got to be controlled by gates or fences. And then he's going to have to provide us proof of permit issued by DEQ. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Got any at this point?
Will the regulation come from the state or come from Rowan County?
It's a really good question, Mr. Green. It's kind of a two-fold approach. We're going to, we're going to sign off on the permit locally that says he complies with zoning standards. And then he will provide that to DEQ to satisfy their permitting requirements. There's, there's two actual things that he's got to get from the county. One's in a road control permit or some type of sign off from, from our office as well. And the other that, that he is zoning compliant. And so if this application is approved, the planning board prepared a statement that's got the two items there for their consistency and reasonableness. But the other thing that I would mention to you is that if it is approved and prior to permitting, we're recommending that the site be surveyed and staked so that we can visibly see where it is. And if need be, we can recreate it in the field. The applicant has obtained a commercial driveway permit from DOT, but there's some conditions that go along with it about the apron and access onto Wright Road. We would require that to be completed before we would say he was zoning compliant. Going to need to provide us an updated site plan with these things, fences, gates, and signage. And he's going to have to provide some stone along that interior hall road for dust control purposes. Those are the things that, that came out of the planning board courtesy hearing. Those are some things that staff recommends. But I would also tell you that as, as this board, you have the ability to suggest other conditions as part of the approval. The one thing that's a little odd about this particular element is that the applicant is not here. And so if you, if you require a condition that he doesn't agree to, then the permit to a large extent is void. Sort of the conditional district, I would remind you, is one of those things that's, that's an agreement between the county and the applicant as to what the conditions are and, and can they meet them. So if you have something that you would like to add to these four conditions, we would alert Mr. Keller and say, your permit is, is approved contingent upon these things. Do you agree with that? Says no, then maybe back before you in the future to, to talk about.
Is that, is that correct? Sorry, say that again. Does that kill it for a year?
Well, I think he's got, and I may be making this up here, but I think he's probably got 60 days to determine what his compliance is. And I'm going to ask Shane, is that so if he says, you, you'll know soon. And so we can talk about that in the future. But, yeah. All right.
The hearing is still open right now.
Yes. And this is just more or less an update. So if you want.
If anyone else, anyone else would like to speak about this, we'll hold it open until such time, anyone from the public? Or if not, then we'll close the hearing. Is that okay, Judy? Close the hearing? All right. All right. And then, so discussion.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Can we put the map back up? One of the things, if you look at the map to the bottom there. All right, yeah, right there, you're good. So there's a church at the bottom and then there's also a church up here at the top, I guess. Because I like to limit his operations on Sunday, since you got two different churches right there. And actually, another street over is another church, but I don't think that one will really be affected by it. So I would like to, part of the conditional uses, they not have, he doesn't operate on Sundays. Which the question, what my mind is, when you say he doesn't operate on Sunday, does that mean midnight Saturday to midnight Monday morning? So I don't know. Also, after, I talked to some of you about that and I think you're pretty much in agreement with that. Also, I wondered about maybe limiting from, from dusk till dawn at night. I don't know how much, do you know if he would be out there at night riding around with his
I don't, no, I don't. There's not been any reference to lighting of the partic, of this facility, so temporary or permanent. So I don't know. That hadn't been brought up. But again, I think if it's a, if it's a condition that the board would like to impose, do it and we'll tell them these are the conditions that, that you feel comfortable in issuing a permit and see what he says.
Yeah, because, because the, the dusk till dawn thing, I was thinking, you know, in the summertime, he could work a lot later. You know, if we save a certain hour than he could in the wintertime. Well, I guess it'd be the opposite though, too, wouldn't it? Because in the wintertime, he would, he may need to work later. So I don't, I don't know if anybody has any ideas on that part. But first part of, you know, I don't think it should be operating on Sunday because you got two churches there. And I know people live right around there, so give everybody a day off from it.
Did he allude to any business hours?
He didn't. But, but one of the things to go along with what Commissioner Caskey was saying, this is a two acre site, so it's not massive.
Yeah.
So there's, there probably is some inherent, inherent limits on how much he can do on that site. And that's one of the reasons we're kind of interested in what the, the boundaries of it look like. I mean, because he owns a big piece of property and, and has a way of creeping sometimes. And, and we'll have a better idea if we're, we're called to visit it and what, what he's doing and not doing.
I think you see here at the bottom, he's got big piles of stuff here along the road. I don't know that he should have over there. But this would.
That may be on another slide there. You can see that better now, Commissioner.
But he'd have to limit all that to the new spot instead of having it out there. This is the giant pit. A lot of people talked about that at the planning board meeting, especially these people that live in the house right here, but we won't. That's, he's exempt from, by the state for that pit there, so. What we can do about. And then I think the question came up about chemicals, if he was going to spray chemicals, but I think you had talked to someone.
Yeah, that's, this is truly supposed to be an organic operation. I mean, it's, it's, again, it's leaves and brush, organic matter like that, that would be ground, not burned, and recycled for, for sale or giving it away.
All right.
So I guess Eric had brought up a good point of odor mitigation. Actually, I hadn't thought about that, but he said that maybe Craig could talk about that for us.
Just like that.
Could get some odor that would drift over to neighborhoods from composting. It does produce odor. Actually was the one that permitted the site for the city of Salisbury. And that's what we looked around at, like, where we don't get it. So we ended up choosing the sewer treatment plant for our site. Figured it would, couldn't hurt, but some commercial development does have, up to commercial composting sites have received a lot of complaints in the past from, from neighbors. That was in other communities. But this is a smaller one, the type one. Yeah. This is something to be aware of. I, I don't know how you mitigate it, but.
Oh, I was going to ask.
It was, it was a concern from, from neighbors.
So there may not be a way to mitigate it, even though we might be concerned about it.
There is a community that put it in a building and they pump the, the air into the ground to a filter, but that seemed very unrealistic for a site like this. But that was the only thing I've ever seen before.
If they were putting food in it, then we'd probably do that.
Food will produce a lot more odor, but yeah, limbs and, and brush, it is composting. Better never been around.
Won't he have to take this stuff offsite? Those two acres, 210 is an acre.
Yeah.
Or 208, something like that. So he's not, he doesn't have 400 feet square in there.
It's not a very large site.
He's going to be taking that stuff off or he's going to be out of business after a while.
Didn't hold it, but depends on what kind of regulations they have for this. You've, you've got to meet certain temperatures if it's a, if it's a true composting site. But if it's small enough, they sometimes deem it where they don't have to regulate the, the temperature control and the submittals that you have to make to the state.
And that was one issue we talked about last time, is he had a big fire out there a year or two ago. Which I guess, what does that mean? He just wasn't turning it enough?
Yeah, it gets too hot.
Yeah.
Try to keep it between like 140 and 160, somewhere around there where your, your temperatures if lower than that, it's not actually composting. If it's higher than that, your good bugs are, are killed off and catch on fire. It does create a worse odor at that point.
All right. So it sounded like to me, if, if it's, I mean, I guess maybe Ed was saying it's not really a big site. So maybe the, limiting the hours of operations probably not useful or wouldn't really make him much of a difference.
I think if you feel that it's necessary, if it, if it addresses a concern that you have, I would, I would include it. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume anything. You think it's worth pursuing, I think it's worth including. If it means something to you, it means something to others. I would also tend to think that Craig mentioned this, I know that, that monitoring temperatures is one of the things they do, but there's also a volume that they're going to look at from the state perspective where, where we're not really going to look at it. I mean, I think height and width, mounds and windrows and those kind of things are, are stuff they're going to be concerned about. We're concerned about the activity on that particular site. But you know how things work. And, and I don't say this in a, in a condescending way, but, but I tend to think if two acres kind of works for him for a while, he'll, he'll be back for a site that will probably want to be permitted in, in the, the larger realm. It may be warranted. I think this is an attempt to see if, if he can be a good neighbor and this project fits within the community. I mean, I think we all use this type of project, product at, at some point on our lawns or landscape, you know, something like that. So.
What, so if there's, and you know, I don't remember, I guess I should know this, but so when we approve these conditions and we approve this conditional use permit, how long is that? Is that good forever? Or is there a time limit? If there's an issue in the future that we, comes up, then we're out of luck at that point? Or are we able to bring it up?
There's an enforcement process. That's, but unfortunately, just due to the size, I don't know that, you know, he's going to be on a regular rotation of going to check on him monthly. And I don't think that's the way we operate anyway, but, but there's going to have to be a complaint.
Well, what I was thinking is let's say there was odor that no one thought about and you know, we're here a year later and it's really horrible. Are we, do we have any remedy of adding anything at that point? Or is it pretty much?
I don't know the specifics of the, the state aspect of this permit, but I tend to think that food items or, or vegetative matter in that, that realm are not things that are within this. But let's be honest, if there's wet grass out there too, it's, it's going to have an odor. I think one of the things, he's got some distance there between residential uses. I, I don't know how you mitigate that. That's not.
I mean, I think there's, I mean, I think maybe limited it from, say, I don't know, whatever time, 7:00 PM Saturday night to 7:00 AM Monday is probably good enough. I mean, there's a lot of traffic out there a few times a day on Sunday. I mean, that, there's a lot of traffic out there. That whole lot fills up and they've expanded that one lot all, almost this whole, that's an older picture. But they're, they had to put a big gravel lot in the back there to fill up all the cars. From Piedmont. I think, I think maybe what, seven, seven Saturday night to seven Monday?
Mr. Chairman? To me, that's, seems to be a little over aggressive. And I'll just put it from the perspective of when we were talking about dusk to dusk, for instance. You know, we, we have daylight savings time. It started because of farming, trying to save some daylight so people could get some more work done with their kids at home. And of course, now, I know back up on my farm, the guys have rented, they're taking corn silage off 24 hours a day. Now, I understand that it should be closed on Sunday. But I guess I would just hope that we could do it like early Sunday morning, maybe like 5:00. Maybe midnight.
I don't, yeah. I mean, we'll just say Sunday and then that'll be the 24 hour period that's Sunday.
All right, I'll offer up, first of all, motion of consistency. ZO eight dash two three is consistent with the Western Land Use Plan and reasonable, appropriate, based on the following, meets all setbacks required by the property lines for residences, churches, and schools. Two, it provides access roads that are 20 feet from property lines, informational signs for accessing control gates. Recommendation, recommendation is supplemented by the following conditions. One, the two acre area will be surveyed and staked. Two, the applicant will obtain commercial driveway permit through NC DOT. Three, the applicant will update the site plan with the location of fences, gates, and signage. Or the applicant will apply crushstone to driveway to reduce dust. And five, no operations on Sundays from 12:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Sunday. All right, all right. Any other discussion on that? All in favor say aye. All right. And then do we have a motion to approve ZO eight dash two three? All in favor say aye. All right. Shane, welcome.
All right, good afternoon. It's another continuation of a one below. But just a quick refresher. It's a simple rezoning, taking the portion of 640 076 from MHP to RA. This red area identified previously would be from This red area identified previously would be from RA to MHP. I think it was left off with cadastral mapping and zoning designation in 1998, based on the identification of that boundary at that time. And also the property 640 080, which is a stick built home in an MHP zone. Long story, but it would also fix that. So these requests from RA to MHP and MHP to RA are what's on the table. And we'll just continue that, the hearing here. We have a statement, it's on the screen here, it's also on page four, the staff report for consideration there. Figured he didn't want me rambling, um, so.
Ran down to Walgreens real quick.
Yeah, the statement's on the screen here if you want, again, hearing's still open.
Hearing's still open, anyone like to speak on, uh, ZO nine dash two three? Alright, if not, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, we will offer up the following as a reasonable, um, statement of consistency. It's consistent with East Rowan Land Use Plan and reasonable and appropriate based on the following. One, it allows property to be rezoned to the current use and two, it moves parcel zone MHP to RA, which is preferred residential zoning in Rowan County. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
In a second, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a motion approved, ZO nine dash two three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, Shane, welcome back.
Right, one more legislative decision.
Do I have any time, do I have any time to run out again?
Might be a little bit longer this time. Alright, so this is Tiger World. And again, we are rezoning the current area from RA to RACD, conditional district, much like the two hearings ago. It would be for allowing the zoo, have a couple houses on the zoo property. And it would also allow for a campground, which is the next item under the quasi judicial process. There's the site plan. It's to take the non-conforming zoo, make it conforming and then allow the expansion area that was noted and the campground and all the improvements there on 152. One other thing I should note, this is also a continuation of the road naming hearing. We have three road names, Big Cat Run, Tiger Trail and Leopard Loop. So that motion will include those features as well. So continuation, we have the planning board recommended approval. They do have one condition for the board's consideration. We'll need to adopt a statement, which you have before you, it's on page six and seven of the staff report. And the last, on the condition there at the bottom, it was move a waste container that currently is at the end of Cook Road in the right of way. They would move it in the interior. Few residents made reference to that and that would also comply with the new rules for zoos in the county. So that's a condition to move that, it's noted on the site plan. Again, condition of approval there. Any questions?
Okay, anyone wanting to speak as a continuation of this hearing? You want anyone? Alright, then we'll close the public hearing. Y'all gotten any calls about this?
She's been in such an improvement to the prior owner.
I thought the phones would ring off the hook frankly, but I've got nothing.
Um, I do have one question. Shane. We, uh, when we go back, it, uh, back to the picture that she's got drawn for the new entrance. Uh, no, I, I'm wanting to look at. There.
When we pass this, if we pass this, and let's say that something happened and, and Leah sold this thing to somebody else. And they came in and they didn't do any of this in this fashion. That they just put up a chain link fence at the front, set open to the public. Can we hold them to anything that looks like this rend, uh, the rendering that we've been given?
The specific appearance of the sign, I'd say that was not indicated as what they were offering. It was more of a concept, but it does have to have an entrance on 152. Whether it's paired with a median in between, no. If that's something the board's concerned with, then that can also be discussed. Again, the applicant's not here, well, the applicant is, but the owner's not. So is there something specific you were concerned with on the appearance colors?
Uh, no, uh, not necessarily. It's just the, the idea that, uh, this is beautiful. This is going to cost, Greg and I found out that something like this costs a lot of money to build. And if we go back, uh, and somebody decides just to put up a chain link fence right there. I want it to be acceptable to the neighborhood. And I don't want to, I don't want to have to spend a million dollars on it. But I would like them to put up something similar to what they have presented to us.
As far as a chain link fence, I'm wondering how that would fit into the mix, but you know, case in point with this nice sign, that's going to cost pretty penny. And it, it could be a ground mount sign that's wooden or vinyl. So you could have that, um, regression from what this is presented, but it's showing a paved entrance, it does need to be paved. So there's, those criteria, terms of fencing, they have that well within the site. I don't anticipate a desire to fence this entrance here. But the hard thing, and I have some good questions, I can't anticipate the what ifs she might or some other owner might try to do. And then we're sitting there determining at the staff level, does it have to come back to this board? So I don't know if that can be written in words as a condition of what's a, a no-no that would have to come back to this board again. But that's the point of, of having a detailed plan. Leah hired an architect, I think there's a good plan here. So I think in general, if there's a significant deviation from that, it would have to come back to the board.
Should we make that a part of our motion? Or is it assumed that?
I think the hard thing is the qualitative nature as opposed to a quantitative approach of, well, that's clearly has to come back.
Could we not designate that the entrance must somewhat realistic to this trend?
I guess the question, to what extent? Um, that's what I wanted to know for sure.
Well, I didn't get the impression from the owner that they're wanting to do anything less than this.
But agree.
Conversation, the fact that they're spending the money to come off that little small road that they're currently on to get on the highway 152 represents to me that they're really willing to make this an opulent place for, for the kids to come to. But are there any safeguards that we can put on this permit to make sure that, like Jim said, what happens, they sell it? And the new owner says, oh no, I'm not spending $250,000 making entrance on this thing. I'll just put up a wooden sign and here it is.
I think if we take the side to the side, the entrance, which is imperative and is the whole point of the discussion at the planning board level. And the neighbors are definitely excited to get traffic off Cook Road. So that, there's no question they have to have access. If this is approved, that's imperative. But the sign itself, um, again, since we have no sign standards, it's more difficult. If there's something specific the board wants to see, that you can specify that's measurable in a condition. Cause again, this isn't ground mount, but is it message board we want to see?
She said she was going to do a message board, didn't she?
You know, this is an issue that, um, because of growth, I mean, we're dealing directly with folks who sit in front of us, who are the project developers and they tell us what their plan is. And then that can be lost in the translation of a possible sale that could go on. I, I understand what they're all saying. Could we do it conditional on an entrance that is approved, that would be then subsequently approved? Nope. Oh, oh, they're, they're in a different conversation.
Or could, could we put in there that it has to have a divided median entrance?
Sure.
Divided median entrance, see why the road's split in half?
Well, could, could, could we, could we just ask them to come back time of construction of this and work with planning department on entrance that we could all agree with?
Don't have a good answer for that, I think that has to be determined now. And can I see the, the sort of the flavor of the concern is one that's difficult to say. If it's not exactly this, then what is it? If that was on the ground, it might not be a concern either. But it's, it's almost like if it's more high-end or attractive entrance, I'm not sure how to put that in a
Can, and, and, and I guess, and I, I think you're seeing the difficulty, you know, we don't want to over regulate until we want to regulate something. And, and so, so what you've got is we don't have standards for signs. If you want to see standards for signs, I'm sorry, my friends at the city, but.
I don't want to.
They've got standards for signs, but, um, but you know, I think that she would be willing to accept a condition that the entrance design would be similar in scope and materials as presented here. And that at least gives us something that we can work with the owner. I don't, I don't, I don't want to go beyond that Shane, but I, I, I think that we could.
Are you the architect?
I think we could propose something if it's, sure, we can hear from him, but, but also too, if it's substantially similar to this.
And that way, and we use specific language as, as to design and materials, where we're not worried about whether it's off ground or on ground. But the materials might be masonry and similar in scope to this, but go ahead.
Hey, Danny Norman, uh, applicant. This was really more of a concept. She, she actually came to us and said, we'd like to have one that would have the image of the tiger up there. Could be something that would flash up saying, you know, we got a, this weekend Lulu is special or whatever the name of the cat is, you know, those type of things. And we also know that with those billboards, that this is a 55, what was it, 55? That you only get a certain amount of time, you could see this thing, you know, as you're traveling, you're covering so much ground. So it also doesn't want to be a distraction as well. And that was one of those things DOT looked at when we looked at traffic studies, we did all this. I came up with this concept based off of a sign that she's seen, I think it was in South Carolina, that she liked. And it was approximate size and shape, but quite literally, you could spend $250,000 on this sign if you wanted to, with the graphics and everything. I don't think that's what she has in mind. She does want to spend something on there because this is her livelihood and she has such a passion for it. I mean, it's, it's going to be nice. I don't know how to exactly state that how nice, you know, where I'm showing a, maybe a 25 foot sign right here. You know, it might, might wind up being 20 feet or less, you know what I mean? It's very difficult to kind of place that. And I think also based off of the setback requirements for the right of way. It started out at being 50 feet, now it's at 100 feet, is that right? So by the time it gets further, further, further away from the road, just because of what, you know, the, all the ordinances had us do, it might have to get even bigger, I don't know, that, to make that same appearance and look. I'm also showing, if you happen to look, I carried over the Jurassic, Jurassic theme by putting a little flame in a bowl. I don't, really don't think that's going to happen, but you know, I was just trying to carry with the theme, just to show that it is going to be nice. Everything's going to be way off of the runt, you know, way off of the road. I don't think she had any indication or any idea about putting a fence up or anything. She wanted to kind of leave it the way it was, so that you would enter in almost like that jungle atmosphere. And the trees, you know, doing all the things that she can. That was just the concept.
You know, where this is coming from is a lot of us have been on planning board in the past and our, um, philosophy is we'll let the market kind of drive, uh, and, and we're still committed to that. Uh, and a lot of times that works, right? Cause companies come in and they want, um, uh, to put forward a, uh, a vision of their company that speaks positively to the community, right? But some don't want that, some want to put up junk. And so we're caught in the middle of letting the market work, but also, um, forcing folks to, to do things that, um, is respective of our community. Uh, our community is growing, our community is improving. We want all aspects of our community to, to speak, uh, toward the success in the vision that, uh, our community is seeing now. And so we don't know how to put that into words. Is, when we just leave it to folks, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. So we're back to, I think, the same position of, uh, we don't know how to, uh, how to, how to deal with this, so.
And especially this has come to us as a concept. And so how much do we actually put into a concept, uh, for the community of Rock? I'm trying to think about, you know, how much should we do to protect Rockville citizens who are having more growth now, that community than they've had in 50 years? And, um, so I have no doubts that Leah, and I won't try to pronounce her last name because I've never gotten it right. Uh, is going to do the right thing. But you understand our concern here.
Yeah, yeah.
We just don't want another Dollar General, that's all we're after.
Tiger General.
I understand. And then it happens with, with every business really, you know, that we get involved in with as well. They come to us and say, hey, we want to do this. They all have good ideas, but when it comes time to finalizing it and getting it all done, budgets and things step into place and different things that get it.
And several of us have been in the position of having to deal with a city with sign ordinance. And that's the closest I've ever come to shooting anybody in my life, uh, is trying to deal with that. Uh, and I don't want us to get that involved in it, but where, where is, where do you stop and start with this?
That was off the record.
Oh, yeah, y'all didn't get that.
Alright, well, let's work with, uh, Shane, have you come up with anything? Okay, anything?
I think before we've had a couple sites where ground mount, um, brick base, kind of those foundations, but you know, does the board want to see a message board? I mean, I just think if we get beyond the appearance to the, to the, to the details, it gets a little bit more of a challenge. But, and I think just like you heard, that's, that's an expensive sign. So without her being here and seeing that exact number, I don't know. But and your options would be if you wanted to table it and hear from her, if she's committed to that or stick to a, a masonry type sign, you know, non-metal, non-plastic wood, something like that.
Not breaking ground in the third week of December, is she? Not breaking ground in the third week of December issue. All right, um, I think consensus may be that we like to table this, um, just to meet with her, talk with her, kind of her idea is.
And specifically, I think we can craft language for a condition that we can bring back the next time.
Not what you wanted, right?
He do.
Trying to, you know, obviously get this part, as far as the part and things moving forward, so that's what we were here to try to do. You know, that obviously she would be committed to a, a sign. This was the concept that she agreed to and liked and wanted to go forward. Now, the exact dimensions for it, or if you want to say it's block?
I, I think they're only concerned about style and materials, it sounds like to me.
Yeah, so if you want to put, you know, that it's similar in nature to this, I'm sure she would be good with it.
Shane? I'd like to talk to her personally, so she'll know what we're trying to accomplish, not just shove it down her throat, say, here it is.
All right, um.
Make a motion to table.
Can work with her, it's going to work out better this way. Uh, debating whether we're going to approve the project.
Can we, can we have a date for, for the table till January?
Next January, where are you meeting?
First meeting in January.
Yeah. And just, just so you'll know, you can tell her from me, I want to see this happen. It's just, we need to make sure we're doing everything we're supposed to do. So it's not a thing of putting her off. We just want to make sure that once we get it done, it suits everybody's needs, including the neighbors.
Understand.
All right, thank you for being here.
And that probably will be a January the second meeting. That, because the first is the Monday and we won't meet on Monday, but Tuesday, just so we don't, she doesn't come up here January the first.
Uh, Shane, are we going to push this, uh? As well then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Craig, thank you, Jay. All right, plant, uh.
Chairman, chairman, we probably need to make a motion to table that second matter related to that.
I don't think we actually voted on the first one, so we have a motion, a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then on the item G, um, we have a motion.
Table that also.
Table that, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Planning board. On the planning board, uh, Michael Julian, Carla Foster reapplied to at-large seats, motion to approve those two.
No move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've got, uh, at-large seat for planning board was vacated. I, I'd like to nominate Tim Norris.
Second.
Uh, second?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rowan County Rescue Squad, Philip York, he's the nine-one-one division chief. And there's a chief seat on the Rowan County Rescue Squad. And so, uh, motion, a second to approve him.
Somewhere.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bill Feather reapplied for at-large seat on the Rescue Squad, motion in a second for that.
No move.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we, uh, we next the closed session, so motion to adjourn.
No move.
Uh, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. We have a lot to be thankful for. Merry Christmas and, uh, we'll see y'all in twenty twenty-four. We're adjourned.